Okay, we're live. Call this meeting in order of the Honeyberg Comic Council, start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to every republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray, dear Father God, thank you for those that are here today for their counsel and for their commitment to this city. And they would continue making decisions that are to the benefit of all citizens of the city of Honeyburg here today. Be with us, guide, direct our thoughts for these things. We ask you your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Start with approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second the motion?
We have first and second, all those in favor.
Aye.
All had a chance to go through the claims. We have a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve the claims.
I'll second it.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I don't have anything tonight. John Rudipolar does have presentation there. We're going to table through December meeting. He's ill tonight, but I know there's some transformers that we need to purchase for the electric department. He needs to get some more numbers together for you. He was just physically not able to be here tonight. So we're going to skip ahead to Jerry. Jerry Austin, Water Superintendent, if you want to come up. Is that microphone on, Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Good morning, Jerry.
We'll jump into distribution. We had a meter set that we put in out at OFS Plant Five. About a week after we put it in, we had some brass that just poor quality potted brass started leaking. So we had to dig that back up and repair that. From there, we did assist mailing construction with the installation of a new fire service line and fire vault at OFS Plant Eighteen. That's at County Road Four Hundred and Nineteenth Street. They are putting in a large expansion out there, so need for more fire protection out there. We did send all the guys to a Mueller training class at utility supply. They trained on fire hydrants, valves, brass, some new, some new material that was out. With that, they also did acquire CEUs for their water licenses as well. And then from there, when we did our fall flushing, we had a few fire hydrants that we found faulty. So we replaced those. They were late seventies, early eighties model fire hydrants. One there at Seventh and Shelby, First and Chestnut, and County Road Four Hundred and Nineteenth Street. From there, we did, we had two service lines on Sycamore Street. One was actually on, I guess, the north side of Sycamore and one on the south side of Sycamore. Same thing that we've seen in the past with the copper. They are deteriorating from the outside in. Like I said, the only thing we can come up with is electrolysis. We've got a lot more underground electricity, a lot more fiber that does carry a electric charge. And other than that, I mean, there's been no change to soils. So we just get in there and replace those. We go back with poly to help cure that issue. From there, we did have to relocate a service on Geiger Street. That's in between Tenth and Eleventh Street for the road project that's going on back there between Master Brain and Stein Camps. And then we had a water main break at Sixth and Geiger. This is at the beginning of the month. We, I was, I was actually on vacation out of town when it happened. They replaced eight foot of water main. And when they brought the water main back up, they ended up having to shut it back off and replace it total of twenty-seven feet. So we do have that on our list for future replacement. We will look at doing that probably sometime next year. And then we also had a, another water main break that, that following day at the driving range there by the ball wash building. It was just a three sixty brake on it. We were able to repair it with a repair clamp. And then short of that, kind of falls in with the filter plant there. We are performing all of our winter maintenance, getting everything ready for the cold weather. We do a lot of our own servicing for small equipment, large equipment, trucks, things like that. So other than that, filter plants running as it should. And our metering system, we are back to just monitoring, monitoring that with our notifications to customers for leaks and high water usage. Any questions?
Yeah, I'd be more commensurate. We did get our, we haven't got our ISO rating back yet, but Fire Department obviously relies on water for just about everything they do. And as a result, we got a lot of praise from the inspector on our water department and maintenance of our hydrants and things you did. And the fact that we actually flush them and check them, you know, which a lot of communities don't do. It's not really a waste of water. If you have a fire, it's not a waste of water, so.
Right, well, with, with wastewater.
Things and good things from the chief as well as the inspectors.
And we, we don't only flush for fire, fire protection. It, it really plays a big role in our water quality as well. Keeping those mains cleaned out and opened up and it's, it's, we do hear that a lot, that we're wasting a whole lot of water. But it's, it is for a reason, so.
You see a difference where those things deadhead versus loop around and.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Jerry.
Thank you.
City Attorney Phil Schneider, you have anything?
A couple of things. The city has a master service agreement with Midwestern Engineers. They provide engineering services from time to time on projects that we request. We're not bound to use them, but we have this master service agreement with them that includes rates for their various, various crafts and various talent that they have. They've recently been acquired by a larger consulting firm, CHA Consulting, which is a well-known engineering firm in, in the industry. And it gives them a great deal of breadth, expansive breadth in the, their capabilities and their personnel. They have asked for the city's consent to assign their master service agreement to the, the new company that acquired them, CHA Consulting, Inc. Together with any outstanding task orders, I think we may have one or two projects that the Midwestern is working on. They would be undertaken by CHA with the same personnel that, that Midwestern has been using. So a motion would be in order, if you so choose, to approve the assignment of our master service agreement and all outstanding task orders from Midwest engineers to CHA Consulting, Inc.
And we'll still be working with the same engineers, but obviously they'll have a lot bigger talent pool to draw from. I think they go from fifty employees to like twenty-five hundred, but, because they do airports and all types of projects around the country. But for the local water projects, we'll still be working with the same personnel we have in the past. Still have the same relationships and just new person that gets the check from Tom. And so it was really a lot of changes.
When, when do we negotiate another one of those or have to approve another, another one?
What, what we have?
I'm not sure where, so I think, yeah, I think it was a two years, it was about a year ago that we entered into it. I assume the rates don't change either with the new name, right?
No.
No, we're still.
Rates stay the same as they did.
Same as they quoted in the service agreement.
The rate doesn't change and the term doesn't change. I don't really have an issue with it.
Yeah, I'm just curious if.
We're not bound to use them either. If you find a firm that you prefer to use or more suitable to a particular project. This is just a standard agreement that is in place. So if we do choose to use them for any project, the agreement's already in place. And they move forward with their rates.
Yeah, we, we have a few of these and sometimes it's a matter of, from a quality standpoint, but sometimes it also comes down availability. We need somebody to move quickly on a project and whether it be a stormwater. In the middle of a street project, we need to do stormwater, need some other engineering. We can bring him on at that rate and not have to negotiate during the point. Usually we have two or three options to utilize, but.
We're not in the middle of anything right now, or are we?
We're on a, middle of a small project, yes, on the north side.
With Midwest?
Less than twenty grand.
Okay. I thought you had something at one time.
Or Commonwealth. It's Commonwealth.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're just doing that one on an hourly basis right now, so.
Go make a motion.
I'll second.
We got a first, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's authorized and made of sign.
Some time. Another thing, been brought to our attention that after the most recent property tax sale, the county commissioners held, several properties did not sell at the tax sale. When that happens, the county commissioners become essentially the tax sale certificate holders and they are authorized to, to transfer those certificates to units of local government if, for whatever consideration the parties can work out or for no consideration at all, if that's what they work out. There's one particular property the city may have some interest in and that's the property at four ten North Washington Street. As you may recall, that building was fire damaged. It was a residential property. The structure was fire damaged and ultimately the city had to force demolition by a unsafe building proceedings. The property owner is long gone, cannot be located. There's no source of recovery. We do have about a twelve thousand dollar charge against the property. And there may be some, if the city does acquire it, there may be some interest in developing it from developers. So I guess the council would need to authorize proceeding, proceed to negotiate with the county commissioners about acquiring that property. There is a process. I, we have to give the owner notice that we've acquired the tax certificate, tax deed certificate, and then they have, I think, a hundred and twenty days to redeem it. Since we can't find the owner, we'll have to publish notice. And then we file suit in court to obtain a court order authorizing a, a tax deed. And that's all done within a hundred and twenty days after the county commissioners transfer the certificate to the city. But we would need authority to proceed with contacting the county about negotiating that and then bringing it back to you. In the past, they've turned it over for no, no consideration. They've just given them to us. Now we're getting, so any motion to continue on to proceed? I'll make a motion to do that.
So we got, I'll, I'll second it. Got a motion to proceed on taking the property in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that's all? That's all. How about you, Tom? You know, I have a lot today. So I know we do have some, any council items today? Oh, just a lot.
None here. Not by me. Anybody else? Any council items on the, that you'd like to?
No.
Okay, all right. We, also this is the point we're opening up for citizen comments. I know we have several citizens here today, so. If you, if you're going to speak, we ask because this is a televised meeting, that you come to the podium, introduce yourself as to who you are and, and speak clearly at the podium.
Janet Chanel.
Okay.
Sycamore Street. I forgot what else you asked me to tell you. Okay. Update.
Speak clearly what you do, so you're on.
Update, court, December fifth, to finalize the hoarding, hopefully finalize the hoarding problem. Seen some changes. Not everything's being, is up to date at this point, but y'all need to really thank Mr. Schneider and Mr. Heim for their due diligence and following through and being very professional in court system to make sure that this is taken care of. So definitely seeing progress and I thank you all for developing a policy so that we can make sure that our city can get cleaned up and is doing well.
Thank you for saying so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Jason Hiley, county resident. Didn't know if you guys had any updates on, I know the mayor was going to try to talk to some other agencies on the solar development south of town.
Only thing we have is, I think, the opinion that's sent out by our attorney to this Google last week. The two questions that she had, we previewed this answered, I think about ten questions.
Yeah, I believe there was a request to, the city could place a halt on the development, the solar field development. What I, what I have outlined is that our current UDO zoning ordinance does allow solar generation in the Ag District in which, in which this development is, exists. That, that, that UDO was adopted in April of twenty twenty-one. That the developers have relied on that, that designation, that zoning designation to invest money not only in obtaining leases, but also in infrastructure and actual structures. And the city is without power now to, to stop that proceedings unless it's not being developed in accordance with our standards. We have a zoning administrator that has not given me any indication that it's not being developed in accordance with our development standards. But if that were the case, then we could issue a cease and desist order until they brought the development into compliance. But I'm not aware of any.
So.
Development standard that they're not.
Well, this may be something, but the approval was given on eight, seven, twenty twenty-three. We've made five requests to the city for public information on this project. So we feel like we have everything there is on it. I can't say that for sure because we've gotten different things every time. But the administrative approval is on August seventh, twenty twenty-three, and they informed the APC on nine twenty-five, twenty twenty-three that they approved it. According to your UDO, if construction has not started and all permits are not obtained within two years, the permit or the planned, development plan is void. So.
Yeah, I, I don't know when they started their permitting process. I don't know if it was.
It's from the date that their plan was approved.
No, I don't know when they started their, their process, though, when they started getting the permits.
There's no construction right now.
Yeah, if all applicable permits and construction is not commenced. My understanding is there was, construction has commenced, but I, I don't know.
I, the only thing I'm aware of is the Center Point project that they're building a transmission station.
Well, we, we will certainly look into that. What, the only thing that was granted was a special exception.
No, there was no special exception granted. They denied.
No, it was, it was, that's true. It was not, it was denied. The exception was denied.
The, your ordinances require a project development plan for these type of things and it was approved.
Okay.
I'm assuming because it met all requirements of your ordinances. But I believe it should be expired right now.
It may be. It may be.
And if it is expired, I guess I would express that I would like the council to consider putting in moratorium on the solar again and updating your ordinances to better protect some of the residents that live close by to these things. And, and considerations to your fire department who will have to respond to fires on these.
I will get together with Mr. Lake and find out what, what he has, what his file shows.
Is this, is this permit for, or wherever? When that was brought forth, was that for solar generation or storage?
In order to develop the solar generation facility, I don't know whether, well, they have, the developer has to have a development plan and it has to be approved by the zoning administrator. And we're being told that that plan, that zoning, that development plan was approved on August seventh of twenty twenty-three. And two years has expired apparently, without construction. And I believe that's the point.
That's, yes.
I, I'm not aware of that. I just have to review that with Mr. Lake.
Yeah, yeah. And the question I had was, is this, is the plan unchanged? Or have they changed the plan from that original agreement by Mr. Lake? That here's the plan and now I'm hearing that suddenly we have all this battery storage and all this stuff that may not have been part of the original plan, or may, maybe it was. I don't know.
I think the battery storage was listed in there as being outside of your zoning jurisdiction.
That's why I'm asking. I don't know.
The, the development plan I saw, saw, showed solar panels in a floodway, which they requested approval for and got denied.
The variance they didn't get?
Yes.
I don't believe so.
Yeah. And I think a lot of, I think it was even noted in the minutes that a lot of people thought that was denying the whole project, so, but it wasn't.
Yeah, it was just denying the special exception to order to build in the flood.
Flood plane, yeah.
We can't allow, I mean, there's no way you're going to get a special exception for that. But that's in the sixteen point nine acres that falls into our jurisdictions. Okay. Does the county have the same issue where they issued an approval and they haven't started?
The thing brought up to the county was that the permit they applied for there, I don't feel like show, had, had all the information required from their permit application and it did not show the development inside the two mile jurisdiction of Honeyburg. It didn't show solar panels in that area. So my understanding is they're looking into it to see if there's enough changes that it would require resemital. I have not, there hasn't been an air commissioners meeting since then, but. But yeah, sure.
But this referred to the two miles.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm used to the old term, not the new one.
Yeah, it's not a two mile area around it. It's designated.
Yeah.
It's actually a square, um, rectic.
Up to two miles, I think, is what it is. Yeah.
I think it goes as far south as eight hundred, as far west as five hundred.
Five hundred.
Yeah.
Eight hundred, five hundred with that intersection, the corner. Is your west of five hundred or south of eight hundred doesn't, isn't that our area?
Yeah.
As your group, I don't know if it's an official group at all, other than just a lot of individuals that are concerned, but have you considered or have you hired legal counsel for any of these issues yourself?
We have not hired any legal counsel at this time. We thought it best to try to work through our local government because, you know, you're here for the people.
And so.
And, you know, we don't have all kinds of money to spend on lawyers either.
Yeah, right. Just curi, I was curious.
Yep.
So. So if you could clarify to me, you're, the way you read this, the, the two years started on what date?
The day the plan was approved, which would have been August seventh of twenty twenty-three. And they have two years to commence construction, start construction and have all their permits in place.
Now, is groundbreaking considered construction or are you talking?
I don't believe there is any groundbreaking. They're out there surveying it right now. So I think they're still in the planning process. And.
Technically, Phil, if that were something that were to be pursued, we would have to go back to, was it August the seventh again of twenty twenty-five to see if it had begun on that date, right? Not that it's started now, but if it was done on that date.
Yeah.
And verify that all permits had been, which permitting is basically come to state, most of those.
If it hasn't, they'd have to resubmit, they'd have to resubmit a development plan for consideration and approval.
That wasn't, that wasn't this, because I.
We, we have talked to I.D.M. and we were told that they do not have all of their permits.
The only thing they have, I talked to, the only thing they have permission for is the substation.
But that's not their project.
Which is a Center Point project, correct?
Separate project, yes. Yeah. So. We believe there's a valid issue there.
Yes.
And I think the council and the mayor have all expressed concern about this project. I, I think it creates an opening that if you want to look at modifying your ordinances, I think there should be, it should be allowed during that time. So I think other towns have done it. I don't know if you've spoken to any of the ones that have or not.
Well, speaking of the attorney, there are some, and we looked at some other areas that did, obviously they did that prior to the, prior to construction or consideration of construction.
Yeah.
Once that has happened and been approved, there's nothing we can do at that point.
But if this is not valid, then.
That would be a question of attorney, not attorney, so.
If it's not valid, they would have to resubmit their development plan. Again, if it complies with our ordinance, it would have to be approved. But if it doesn't, or if the ordinance is changed.
Yeah, but, but if that, if you change the ordinance, then they have to meet the new requirements.
Correct.
If they come back next week and apply again, obviously you accept it.
If they come back next week and apply again, I assume they would have to follow the full process to, to do that, which would take more than, hopefully more than one meeting.
But they'd have to resubmit, they'd have to resubmit their development plan. And the, the city would have to look at to make sure it meets these UDO specifications.
It's an administrative review versus.
Yes, it's not, doesn't require public notice under our ordinance. It's just administrative review. And I mean, I, I don't know that the city has the technical ability to establish new standards, but that would probably require some consulting engineers to assist the city to require new development standards that.
Which is why you would need a moratorium while you're developing those standards.
Certainly will look at it, see what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, it's logical, but.
Yeah.
I'm not answering you because.
I understand there's legal things that need to be looked into. I mean, to me, it's pretty straightforward. I'm not a lawyer though, so.
Yeah.
But I've done a lot of, worked with lawyers on contracts and different things and looked at these things, so.
Is the.
I'm fairly confident that it's a valid reason.
The original proposal, the company that came and did that, have they've, they've since sold the project to another company or?
It's my understanding they have, they've assigned it. It was Light Source, was it?
Yeah, Light Source.
BP was originally here at one time.
Light Source is a BP was affiliate of BP, I think Light Source was, I believe.
And now, and now what is it?
And now it's a yes.
But who did the original approval?
Light Source, BP.
No, but I mean, like, was that something that Paul, that our?
Paul Lake would have done that.
That Paul did the, because when they came, they came for the bond to decommission. And that's the only thing that we had, but they said everything else was already in place.
Nothing else has to be approved.
You guys wouldn't be required the way that your ordinances are set up right now. It would just be the PC.
It's an executive review of the application. If everything's in the application, it's approved, basically. Unless a variance is, needs to be issued.
That's what I'm saying. If you update your standards or require special use permit or bigger setbacks, you know.
And I do know that the setbacks were increased, more than what we, what's normally.
I believe they use what the county required for setbacks, which is two hundred and fifty feet from a residence. Which, that's not even a football field, so. That's the house, not the property line either, so I think it was sixty foot or so. I'm not sure. I speak out, attorney.
Yeah, because normally it's twenty-five feet off property line or something.
Yeah.
But it's actually required that more sprints and other two setbacks. County doesn't have a whole lot.
No, and we're trying to get them to update theirs as well.
We are too, so.
I am, yeah, yeah, the, not trying to oversimplify it, but how I understand it is the reason they come here is we're one of twelve counties in the state that the, the county doesn't have the right situation, ordinance or zoning or whatever, and we're only like a one of twelve counties in the state that does not. And that's why they're here and that's why they're not up the street in some other county that has this, because it's much harder to get in.
They can move the project eight hundred feet to the west and the south and there's nothing we can do.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
So that's probably more, so more angles to approach here.
I do know that there were some elected officials in a meeting that discussed that, but I'm not sure where they're going with it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have you seen a county ordinance that you would agree with or that you would?
I, I mean, there's all kinds, like Davies County has one that's twenty-five hundred feet from a property line. You can't have a solar panel. I think Spencer County has a lot of different setbacks from different places. There's a pretty comprehensive, I think it's a thousand foot from a resident. I think it's two miles from a school corporation property. And they have a bunch of other standards too. I mean, there's.
I believe there's only eleven counties now, it's said a twelve. I think Gibson was one that enacted recently.
I know they've always kind of went back and forth on it, so.
They enacted last year, but there's, it's down to eleven. I'm with you on that one.
Yeah, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what to recommend for your setbacks, but I, I feel like two hundred and fifty feet from a house and even less from a property line is probably not very reasonable for people who's live right next to it and are going to lose property value, so.
So we appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Hopefully we, you guys can look into it and. Hopefully we, you guys can look into it and.
Yeah, I won't hold back.
Have your chance.
And I guess if if it is void, I would. Ask that you really consider putting a moratorium while you update your ordinances to. You know, it, I don't know how long it takes to go through that process, six months, if it's a year, whatever, but. You know, I think a short moratorium for the betterment of the community is worthwhile, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Since it's a simple building permit, would it be a moratorium on all permits or just?
Well, on all, on all permits dealing with solar.
Okay.
Solar generation, uh you know, it, the process to amend it is, you know, maybe sixty days could be done, uh. But that's the easy part, the difficult part is developing standards, and again, we don't have the technology, the the. Information, the ability to to come up with standards that are reasonable, that that would withstand attack. Any standards that you develop have to, can't be arbitrary and capricious, they have to be reasonable and reasonably related to our governmental interest. Um and and so we would need some assistance and consulting engineers to assist us in in developing those standards. We, our U D O uh used, apparently used standards that were kind of uh. Uh out of the box by a consulting firm that helped us with our planning. And that's what, that's what was adopted, and apparently those are not acceptable to a lot of people, offensive to a lot of people, so. If we wanted to study that again, we're gonna need uh to get the, to get the talent that could help us analyze that and develop those standards. So that they're not arbitrary, they're not capricious, and they're reasonably related to our interests.
Am I understanding this correctly, that even if we moved at light speed? The way, you know, as fast as a governmental entity can move and determine that they were. In violations, the the two years has passed and they didn't start construction. And we put a moratorium, and then we begin the process, I mean, I I'm thinking this is what I'm hearing you say, we we establish a moratorium. We begin researching how we want the U D O to work, then we pass that change, we approve that change in our. In our own book of ordinances. You're suggesting that, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't yet, I'm just saying that if we did that. They would just have to move eight hundred feet and be outside of our jurisdiction, so it would still then. Go back to the county having to do something very similar.
Yeah, it's a little more than eight hundred feet, though. It's probably half a mile or mile.
Right on what it is.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty large area that's in your jurisdiction, it's two hundred and thirty-six acres.
Jurisdiction is this side of five hundred and north, approximately eight hundred.
It's two hundred and sixty-one point eight six acre acres.
It's on the cross lines, original application, it shows you the two hundred and sixty-one acres that they're under.
So it's, it's a pretty substantial part of their project.
Do you, do you know if if they lost the right to use that amount of acreage? Would it stop their project, would it just inconvenience them?
I don't know if it would stop it, I don't know if they would move that to other areas that they have under contract, I I can't say that, you know? I I think it would slow it down for sure, because they'd have to make a lot of changes.
I checked again with. On that, and they're still showing sixteen point nine acres on the development plan in our.
Well, that might be in the, that might be in the.
Well, maybe I can help you, I don't know.
That might be what's in the uh. Level.
Yeah.
Like a copy of the investment plan?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the plan.
Shows multiple places that it's two hundred and sixty-one acres.
Within our jurisdiction.
Yes, Hallen approved over two hundred and sixty-one acres, would you like a copy?
Yeah, that'd be good.
But I mean, that's the thing, like these old, lot of towns, lot of counties. Sign up to get their zoning stuff and it's cookie cutter, you know, this is good for everyone type things. And, you know, you get stuff like this, because. Those are big documents to read through.
This is, well, this is more of a special interest.
And you don't know what you don't know at the time.
It's very difficult to write a U D O for to and and. I speak for myself, but I think I know my constituents and I know my co-coal people here on the floor here that. We are not in the, not in the interest of adding a lot of government.
Yes.
We think smaller government, I think that way, I think my neighbor does too here, that we think smaller government. We're not trying to cramp you as far as lots of rules and regulations, but in situations like this, this may leave a door open.
Yeah.
And then, so um by you bringing all these facts and and things, it helps us decide whether whether we need to. Constrict this this access, or is there anything we can do at all?
Yeah.
Um I think this fight is on on your part, is it, has to be held on several fronts, the county, it definitely has to be on their front.
Yeah.
Because uh that's, that's probably how they got here, um because there was, there was nothing in place to. Make it un-un reasonably hard for them to do this.
Unfortunately, the state recommended that counties without zoning establish an ordinance for it, but if you read the code about that ordinance, it. Basically makes you a Soleretti county, so.
Yeah, be careful.
Yeah, because it's the, basically the minimum standards, you know, uh.
Right.
But they, and I'm sure they got those from somewhere, but not from the public, so.
I'm not sure where they cut the numbers, but.
But I, if you do hire somebody to you, to your U D O. I would suggest hiring somebody that will look into the details, and I worked for a county that, you know, they've had the first. First pitch was something like this, and they made him completely redo it to make it more user friendly and better fit their county and try to reduce regulations, so.
The question of where they started construction, they requested last Thursday night at that meeting, and they said they're not doing any construction, either the construction that's out there is cross lines to our uh. Center Point Energy, not they have done anything yet, that's what they told us.
And that was at the event center?
Mm-hmm, that's great.
I wasn't there, was out of town.
Twenty 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 nine. And it's per the University of this study on the.
Do you wanna see?
Uh solar ordinance and things, that's twenty twenty-one, flip it over, it goes to twenty twenty-two, okay? The people that know.
One more.
Page. Okay, if you can see, it gets darker and darker, because you're getting more people against it, but the last page is current, just look at the counties that are not, still gray, that's where they're going.
Right here. Pleasure. Over the night and that. This is all blocked down up here already, so.
Studies based on nine different parameters, setbacks, you can rip it all up, it's online.
Yeah.
Well, for years, this part of the state's been called no man's land because of those gray areas.
Right, and all these counties are doing is just making a moratorium so they can tap some time, that's what we're asking.
Sure.
Need the county.
I want to thank you guys uh for your commitment to this, um I do want to uh advocate for those that weren't able to make it tonight, we have over three hundred and thirty signatures. Um on a handwritten uh petition of those who are against the project being uh placed between the. Southridge High Schools, Southridge uh Middle School, Huntingburg Elementary, or Huntingburg Elementary School and Holland Elementary School, and then there are over two hundred and seventy-seven online. Signatures for a petition um of the the similar uh matter. This was brought up in the last meeting, but this is also a safety issue, yes, we don't want this in the, our our backyards, but. Um again, this is a main corridor from Huntingburg to Holland, it will be dangerous for those drive, those new drivers. During construction, it will be dangerous for those with, that have any sort of roadway departure, um if they were to happen to drive into the solar fields. Um and again, City of Huntingburg has a concert hint of plan, plan your home, your Huntingburg. You'd be going against goal number one and goal number two of that plan. So yeah, we look forward to hearing what information um you can provide and uh. Again, with with my fellow neighbor here, please enact a moratorium on this project as soon as you can, thank you.
Good evening, everybody, my name is John Colton Barker, I am with the Town of Holland, I'm a board member there. And I'm reaching out to you guys for a little bit of help, the Town of Holland does not have any zoning or annex power. We don't have it, we tried it once before, it got beat down, and we just don't have it. So that requires uh a little bit of help from you all, if you can, and and the concern here is, like Holly said, our elementary school, two miles. Your schools, two miles, within that circle of, we, you know, I I call it dispersion ring of death, is what I actually call it. It, we also have some uh around three hundred kids that are in daycare. That are not just Holland residents, that's from other counties. And that's, it's a concern for us, you know, I'm there to serve my community, I'm doing the best I can. And when I found out about this, I was coming back from a uh family gather gathering in Ohio three weeks ago, that's the first time I heard about this. And I think that is totally irresponsible from this company, A E S Indiana, it 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 just absolutely dumbfounded me that. None of our board members knew that this is going up, only reason why we knew about this is because I got a phone call. Uh saying, hey, you have a minute, yeah, I got three hours of driving time, let's have it. Um so we've, as a council, we've talked about maybe looking again at zoning and annexing. But if you, if you look at the reality of Holland, we're landlocked, one sixty-one is unlimited access. City park to the north, businesses to the south and uh and residents to the south. Uh to the east, um what do we have now, the possibility of a solar field going in? And then toward the, to the uh west, we have farmers that have been. You know, doing this farm for years and years and years, hundreds of years, and we're not going to be able to do anything about that, so we're, we really don't see a need. Or the capability to get something passed, I mean, it's just reality check, we just don't have it. Another thing too is uh when I started, I I feel like I'm way behind the power curve with this, you guys, the people behind me are are way in front of it. I'm I'm trying to run as fast as my artificial knees will let me go uh to get up here on in speed, uh I do have. Uh a lot of questions uh in my, in my brain, um and I've made, I've got, I got fifty right here. And these are concerns from, that I've heard from our people, and some of the concerns for me, um I'm retired army, I truly believe in the what-if monster. And uh an example would be the Huntingburg Airport. If you look at it, we have arrivals in on runway nine, and departures on two seven, and guess where that goes over the top of, that solar field. The example would be if a one seventy-two is taken off, we have a student pilot taking off, doing a solo for the first time. Inexperienced pilot, the glide ratio for one seventy-two, and sometimes maybe uh some other planes are nine to one to ten to one. That means nine feet forward, you lose a foot of of altitude, and if you're at five hundred feet, you don't have much decision time, you're trying to, you're trying to get this plane. To do what it needs to do, fly the plane and not crash into something. And they put this solar field out there and that battery. Battery storage out there, I I'm a pilot, I flew uh two weeks ago, I flew on Saturday and flew. And just to see what what the possibilities, we did a departure from two seven, kind of up to about fifteen hundred feet. Uh A G L above the ground, and then I was amazed that, of course, we don't know where these panels are gonna go, we have an idea. But you can see where the solar or the substation is going, and that's concerning to me and my pilot buddy that was with me. I asked him when we got back down, I said, if we lost an engine, would you be concerned, he said, yes. That's exactly what he said, so that's the, some of the things that I'm asking you as council people is to think about. Safety of our kids. Safety of our communities, whether it's you or us, we're close enough, we know we, you know, we spend a lot of time in Huntingburg. But this, these schools are within two miles, and that right there can be something that you can look at. Can we take care that, can we make some type of ordinance saying you cannot have something like this within two miles of a school? If we would have had it, if we would, if got this through twenty-two years ago, we could, we'd have a dog in the fight, but we don't. Not at all. And uh I would like to to give these questions, uh and if you guys get good chance to look these over. I mean, I don't think they're too far-fetched um for you guys to look at and answer them, or, you know, maybe it might. Turn that light bulb on for something, but uh I would just, I would just help, I would just ask them for some help here, just like everybody in the county. Everybody we talk to, they don't like this idea, once we start talking about batteries and and the, all this tox-toxic stuff that could happen, you ought to see them. They get mad, why are they doing that so close to schools? Why are they doing it so close to an airport? So I just asked for consideration uh for a moratorium uh to help. And and if, and if you need help with something, please reach out to me. Uh you can call the Town Hall of Holland, they know how to get to me, um. Give you my cell number, whatever you guys need, I'd be more than happy to help you guys out as much as I can, because. I'm there for that community, just like you guys are, so, thank you very much.
These can get them out to elected officials.
What's that?
We'll make copies of these and send them out.
Okay, okay, all right, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is this contact information on that? Is your company, would you, would you write it on?
I have it, I'll, I'll put it on the email with them, because I have it.
Okay.
Good, all right, thank you.
I, well, I have whatever you have listed with the county on Town of Holland.
Um.
Let me see if I got, maybe.
Here, just let me, can I have a back, I'll just.
Once you go ahead and put it on there.
I'll put that on.
We know where you live.
I'll let him go there right on. No, I don't have it. So do, do we have to?
Probably on the county website, but who knows?
I think it's incorrect on the county website, to be honest with you. Um.
Not sure we can establish.
Yeah, submit that.
I guess we could, uh the moratorium on consideration.
I will also say that.
We know where you live.
Our December third meeting, we're gonna have A E S there to. Give us a presentation and talk to us, and also, we haven't had confirmation, but we should have some state legislator.
If they've already started constructing.
When is this, your Holland Town?
December third at six o'clock.
At least it wouldn't do any harm.
I don't know, I don't.
Yeah.
They'd probably litigate it.
It's not a big place.
Thanks, John.
A whole lot of whole people.
I'm Duane Keck, and I live at seven fifty South four hundred West here in Huntingburg. You guys are talking about setback, if they're only gonna allow two hundred and fifty feet from my house and not my property line. That's gonna put them real close to my house. I I get different answers on setbacks. When they had their meeting over here, the the building, the A E S or whatever, one guy told me three hundred foot. Another one says two hundred foot from. So I don't know, I want to show you where my house is.
Let me catch his name.
House is right here. This is where they wanted to put the panels.
This is our.
Okay.
This is what, what was it, two or three years ago, when they first. Cross fine first came in, they wanted to put them down here, but the city. You guys voted it down because of the walk flood.
That's what you're seeing here, your house is.
My house is. Let me get this straight again, it's right here.
Yeah.
And this is where the panels is gonna be, this is my property line.
These slashes here are the uh.
That's a flood.
That's the flood plain that was been talked about there, this dog line is our jurisdictional area.
Question, like he was talking about flying airplanes. Where I live, anybody that practices flying comes over my house, guess what? They're gonna be flying over these panels.
Sorry, we didn't, we didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Duane Keck, K E C K.
Keck, okay, I'm sorry.
So this is four hundred, that's five hundred's out here, actually.
Look it up on G I S then.
And that's two hundred and six acres.
What you're looking at. This here is thirty seven acres, this is a hundred and sixty-four. This is all Smith screen.
Yeah, which one number is that?
Four hundred? Picture over their computers as they didn't have handouts of their thing, but this is, so it's a little bit updated there, cause it doesn't show it in the flood plain. But his house is.
Yeah.
Here, right there, yeah, right there.
So I'm gonna have them on two sides of my house.
And this is two more jurisdictions. That's east right there, all of that is.
Yeah, I can see school right there.
And that's Dave's.
And, well, I was off on the acres, but according to our records here, it's still sixteen point nine, so.
We're not gonna argue about that.
That might just be in the flood plain. From Paul Lake.
Okay.
No, I, I think he's talking about how much of it was proposed to be in the flood plain.
Those are two very different things. Do you acknowledge that?
Yeah, yeah.
What they gave to us is that in our jurisdictional area, the only thing, just told, told us in the meeting.
But if they told you that, they told you wrong.
We'll double check that to make.
If we can control that, I wonder if they even continue on with the battery packs anywhere else, if this is.
I mean, it's so spread out, it's not, I mean, this is.
You know, I mean, when they put battery packs down there, it's close to the hall or, you know.
No, that's what an ex- substation.
Okay.
No, I got you though.
On August ninth, that was when the border zoning appeals, that's when Paul Lake introduced petition twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash oh one. Okay, so that's, that's your eighteen acres, that's what was in the jurisdiction, okay? The BZA denied that permit.
Okay.
On.
Well, we're getting everybody's back.
Why don't we get some decorum here? Sit down and come to the podium when you want to speak.
So on August ninth, yeah, go ahead.
My house sitting here and they put these panels in. Even if they go, cause now they're telling me my house is gonna be, you know, barely three hundred feet from my property line. So how far are they gonna put these from my property line?
That's a good question.
Some of them say fifty feet, others say a hundred. What's it gonna be? That's my question. Comment is. My wife and I put our home up for sale.
Yeah.
About a month ago.
Seven fiftyish.
Thought we'd get away from these, well, we decided we'd stay. About three weeks ago, we talked to a lady and she said, well, you had your house up for sale, I said, yeah. Said, we came and looked at it. We said, well, did the realtor tell you about the solar panels? She said, no. But if my husband would have heard about it, we wouldn't have bought your house. And also the realtor has told me, this is just what the realtor told me. I don't have proof. But he said, with these solar panels, I've probably lost a hundred thousand dollars off of my property value. I hope the farmer enjoys his money for leasing to these guys, cause I've lost. I moved to the country because I'm a country boy. I can smell turkey crap, hog crap, that lasts four or five days. This is a thirty-year lease.
Thank you.
And I've retired to try to have a place I could enjoy.
Hello, my name is Dave Duncan, um I live on five eighty-five west. About a mile from where the uh BESS battery electrical storage system will be proposed located. John alluded to how dangerous this is, so I wanna go over the few things in a lithium ion fire. And what is produced during the lithium ion fire. There are two, there are several gases produced in lithium ion fire. One is hydrogen fluoride, okay, hydrogen fluoride. The OSHA permissible exposure limit is three parts per million. The immediately dangerous life, to the life and health is thirty parts per million. Lithium ion battery fire can produce up to six hundred parts per million of that gas. I'm just giving some education here. Hydro fluoride interacts with moisture. So if it's raining when the batteries blow up, it turns into hydrofluoric acid and runs off to wherever. The other gas that uh is produced is hydrogen cyanide. And it's permissible exposure level is ten parts per million. And the immediately dangerous to life and health is fifty parts per million. And a lithium ion fire can produce up to three hundred and eighty parts per millions. There have been, I counted nine battery fires around the, mainly in the United States, but around the world in this, this year alone. They've had one in Arizona and they had one in California and Arizona. The battery burned for ten days, they had a hundred firefighters on site for ten days. We don't have a hundred firefighters in the whole county combined. California burnt, fire burned for seventeen days. Uh this is gonna be uh a nightmare for EMA, for emergency management. There, uh I did some calculations on wind and speed from where this, generally where this uh battery field's gonna be. With the twenty mile an hour wind, the cloud will be at South Ridge High School in six minutes. If you know the clouds are coming, there's no way you're gonna evacuate that school in six minutes, even if you know the thing is on fire. And if you go to forty mile an hour, that's three minutes. So depending on wind, speed and direction, it's gonna affect the whole county. And uh city hall, ten point eight minutes, right here at twenty mile an hour winds. Now, the two mile exclusion zone is kinda funny to me because smoking gas doesn't stop at two miles, you know, it just keeps going. What AES will tell you is it will disperse. But what they can't tell you is how much, cause there's too many variables. Inversion layers and atmosphere, moisture, all kinds of stuff, they can't nail it down. And they could give you one number, but this is just one number. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say, I just want you to understand that uh this is, could be and probably will be the toxic bomb going off near your schools. And that's why I agree with these people, we should have a moratorium till you guys can upgrade ordinances and make sure this thing's safe. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Bill, I put it back to your court.
Well, if the council chooses, um you, you could instruct uh the, the planning department to uh, to halt on any further approvals of development plan for solar generation facilities until such time as uh the council's had a time to propose an amendment. Council can propose amendments to the UDO, it then goes uh before the plan commission and, and uh they make their recommendation that it comes back to the council for an ordinance. But you could adopt, you could, at, at this meeting, uh instruct by a motion on the minutes, instruct the plan, uh I mean, the planning administrator to halt any further considerations of approval on development plans for solar generation facilities within the jurisdictional limits of the city. Until a further study of uh development plans and standards. Uh if in fact, this development plan has been approved and that it has not been, it, it hasn't expired, it wouldn't apply to that. But the indications are that it has expired, the approval has expired, if they haven't started construction within the two years.
I think it'd be a great idea.
It may have to be litigated at some point.
It could be, they may litigate, they, they may litigate whether or not they've started. I, uh, but I, I do tell you, we, we don't have the capacity to come up with standards i- in-house.
No.
We're gonna have to hire consultants to uh establish these.
I got one more thing to say, if, I'm sorry, Bill.
To establish these uh standards, we'll have to have consultants. Uh and it's not gonna be done overnight, it's not gonna be done within sixty days.
No, it will not.
Right. So you could propose a longer moratorium?
Well, just a moratorium until they're developed and.
Till they're developed.
Yeah.
But no, no, no doubt, that in.
That's correct.
Go ahead, John.
I talked to NDOT, I went out to the site and looked up, looked at their, their public information board. The only thing I could find was something about um structure and drainage, construction, point nine nine north, three point three three north of State Road fifty-seven and forty-one junction, that's not even in our county. So I called NDOT to ask that, ask that question. Yeah. So I asked, I called NDOT and talked to an individual that, and I, I gave him the information and he said, I don't even know where that's at. I shouldn't be in, involved with you. He did find the um, the permit and it said it was only for the substation, that they have not uh applied for a permit for the solar field or the battery. And that, that came from NDOT, so I don't see how this can be, you know, say that they've started pros, started the process, so, thank you.
Thank you, John.
I, before we leave our train of thought. Phil has said that we could make a motion to instruct the.
Zoning director.
Zoning director. To um not allow any further, I, I didn't, I didn't, I know what you said, but I.
Permits. Yeah, not consider approval of any further development plans for solar facilities uh until uh the council has had a chance to study revising the development standards.
Okay, so moved.
All second.
But first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And the next?
I don't think it was like you're convincing us to do one thing or another, we're just trying to convince, figure out what we can do. I, I mean, you guys, you know, and I appreciate that, and I mean, uh, we.
Step one.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means.
We're just trying to find out what we can do to stop it, so, so you're not trying to convince us one way, you know, to, to go your way, so we, we get it.
One last thing, I, you, you said several times, and I understand this, that you don't have the technical expertise or as far as ordinances are concerned. We can help you with that, there are people who have done this before around the country that have written very specific ordinances for cell, or for solar fields and batteries, BESSs, okay? So we can, we can provide you with that information.
Good.
That would be, that would be helpful and then we could in, encourage um some sort of committee to assist maybe the zoning department along with professional help from a consultant, um I don't have that expertise, I do not. She, you guys probably dug into this way more than I'll ever understand and that's fine, but we need, we need. I get it, you're here for, you're here for the right reasons, I think.
Here's the study that I showed you guys in math, it's not anti-solar thing, it's just a, they were, pretty just done a study in the source, just, here's the rest of the study.
Okay, there you go.
Setbacks, ground cover, fencing, underground cables. We'll copy. This one.
Does anyone else have, to speak?
One has the lots on, so.
Yeah, I wanna make a copy.
You can have the rest of it, you can have that.
Okay, thank you.
They've been doing this since twenty twenty-one.
Good call. It's a good set, I mean, um, I don't know anything about it, but I don't wanna.
To, to add to that, um, this has been mentioned, but both Spencer and Davies County have done a lot of work in uh increasing their ordinance setbacks um from the default uh Indiana setback, so um we've made contact with those individuals and would be happy to help out and make those introductions on why they made those choices, why they went that direction. Um so likewise, happy to share any information.
Appreciative.
Yeah, absolutely.
We still have the issue with the county, so.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is a.
I have talked to a couple of county officials, I mean, I'm, I'm on your side, believe it or not, okay? I am, um, I'm not, not a fan, I've always said it. Never will be.
I've got a meeting to speak with first, but Spencer County about their ordinances. And she reached out to me and said that she'd be more happy to give all her information, good, and any guidance that would be, so I'm, whatever I can grab, I'll be more happy to share with you. Spencer County's a thousand foot.
I think Davies County is twenty-five hundred feet.
The standards they gotta be, the standard.
This is. Right.
Spencer and Davies already adopted them?
Correct. And Davies, Davies has as well, those are in place ordinances.
It is, so, there you go. Keep you up at night.
Okay.
So, real quick, sorry, if you don't mind to wait for just a second, Phil, while I got it on my mind, or I'll forget it after a while. If a county like Spencer has already gone through the process, they've hired the right people, they've adopted the ordinance, passed the ordinance. What in that ordinance might keep a town like Honeyburg or a county like Dubois from just rubber stamping it and approving that same thing?
Nothing, but I don't, I think you wanna make sure that whatever standards they've adopted uh are suitable for us. I mean, you don't wanna just rubber stamp something, you wanna, you understand it, you understand it, applies, it's reasonable, it's not capricious. It, it satisfies, it, it meets your interests, your governmental interests. And it's not, it's not punitive, it's not being done just to, to punish landowners uh who want this. But it, it has some uh, some significance, some meaning uh to meet, to meet your governmental interests.
Okay, so more.
You wanna know if make sure it's been tested too?
Some of these have not, I'm sure.
No. So I, I agree that all that stuff should be considered, I'm just wondering, is there like copyrights or would the attorneys that help Spencer County?
These are matter, these are public, these are public documents, they're not copyrights.
That's more what I'm thinking.
Either, um, the other side of what, I, I, I do think that um he is correct. If we rubber, you can't rubber stamp something because um it needs to be looked at, um is it defendable? Is it, is it things like that? We wanna, we wanna do what's right for all citizens within our jurisdiction. And we also, you know, if, whatever the county would do, I mean, it would have to be something that could be defended. Um just because you enact something doesn't mean somebody can't take it to court and they prove that it's malicious or of ill intent or it's too prohibitive or you know, that's what, that's what I have the attorneys for, I mean, but uh I do think there's going too far also, so we have to, there has to be a balance here. So that's why I think that we would have to have consultants and, and, and look into it a little bit deeper than. Um but I do think, I do think a lot of the, maybe the groundwork has been laid, surely they hired a consultant, you know, all of them had to.
Yeah, I've seen their ordinances and they're, they're pretty technical.
So I, I doubt, I doubt that, you know, a three-person, you know, or four-person board or whatever they have in these counties has had the time and expertise to craft this without expert advice, I wouldn't think so.
And that, that kinda takes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The one thing that I did get out of this when I started talking to two of the members of uh, of this um, um ordinance was they looked at everything and what they were allowed, what really helped them was Spencer County uses a lot of wells. And they were concerned about the runoff. And that right there really helped them, so I'm just asking, asking, you know, even, I'm gonna talk with these county commissioners to look outside the box and look at that, that's why I brought up the two miles. If you use that aspect, maybe we might be able to work something out where you have just a, a little bit better, better chance of changing some type of an order, bringing it up with some type of ordinance to either yourselves and to the, the uh, uh county commissioners. So just that, you know, we need to work outside the box, we get, just in case, you know, uh just brainstorm as much as you can, just ask those questions.
There could be more.
Yes.
And that's kind of hitting on, the only thing, other thing I wanted to add is you've got, you've got a lot of uh advocates in, in your, in this room um and in the community, um you've got engineers, you've got retired industry experts, you've got ex-military in this room tonight. Um let alone of the resources in, in the whole Honeyburg ETJ and, and city. Um so I, I think that that's something that would be really beneficial, we feel like this has been slid under the rug and we're pulling it out piece by piece. I just asked that there's transparency, there's public involvement in, in wherever you guys do go with this, whatever ordinance, whatever changes that you do make and enact that, that everyone is involved and has a seat at the table. Um I understand the, to Mr. Snyder's uh point that, you know, to all of your points, that it has to be um fair, for lack of a better term. Um but again, the transparency, I think, is something that we're really asking for and understanding um why you made this decisions that you did. Um cause it's for our future generations that are the, we're gonna have to be the ones uh cleaning it up, may not be in my lifetime, but it'll be in my kid's lifetime, so um that's it, thank you very much.
I would, I would comment on your, on what you said there, it's the other side of the coin, is there's, there's a group of people here that have, are, are asking for their interest, but there has to be, there has to be another group somewhere that um has some level of want for this also, so. And when you're fighting, when you're, I'd say. and when you're fighting, when you're, I can't say fighting, but when you're presenting with the county and, and with the, with governmental bodies like this, that is something that has to be also considered that, you know, we absolutely don't want to take away someone's livelihood, but then we, we do need to make sure that this is, you know, um, what's best for the area. So.
Oh. I think it was what, two years ago when this, the very first meeting with Cross, Crossvine was here? And that's when you guys shot down, putting them by the airport in the flood zone. Nobody heard anything after that meeting about these panels. Nothing. Nothing. I lived there. The farmer kept farming the ground. After about, you know, up till this year, I thought, you know, it didn't go through. Well, it just so happened back this summer, I got a letter from, what is it, A A E S? And it said if I had any con uh, had any questions or concerns to let them know. Well, they had a email address at the bottom of the letter. I typed it in. As soon as I did it, come back, just snap of the finger, you're not on our list. So I couldn't talk to nobody.
Hmm.
So about a month or so later, I get a second letter, very same thing. Put the email in? No. So what did I do? I took the letters that they sent me, wrote at the top of it, false information. You can't get a hold of nobody. There's no phone number. How are we to ask any kind of questions? Put it in an envelope, mailed it back to them. Finally, three weeks ago, or about three weeks after that, there was a guy showed up at my house. And that was the first time I'd heard anything from anybody about those solar panels. But he still couldn't tell me when they were gonna put them in, how long it was gonna take, had no idea. All he asked me was if I wanted to have trees put up around my property to hide the panels. Well, it just so happened about two weeks or prior to him showing up, my wife and I decided we were gonna plant trees on our own property. So when he showed up and asked me about planting trees, I already had the holes dug. And I told him, I said, you see this? I said, my wife and I are already planning on planting them because we don't want to have to sit and look at them. I mean, it's gonna take time, but that's the only thing I can do to hide them. But granted, he did go back. He approved to have them planted almost three fourths of the way around my property. And they are planted, but that doesn't mean I still want to see, sit and look at this because they're that close to my house. Because my understanding, on the west side of my house, where the ground runs to the south, so of a morning, the sun comes up in the east, so where are they gonna be shining towards? My house. And the guy said, oh, no, they'll be flat. I said, no, don't give me that. I've seen them out along the interstate. I drive over the road. I've seen them. I know how they operate. So I told him, I said, well, that's great. I get to sit on my back porch, drink coffee and have those shining right at my face with the sun reflecting off of them. The other thing I told him, if you'd have been out at my house today with what rain we've got, that field and the way it lays, the water runs off that field and if we get a downpour, my ground looks like I'm on an oceanfront. And that's the second thing I told them, that that's not gonna happen. They're gonna have to do something to divert that water someplace else. I told them farming, that's one thing, but water off the solar panels? No, I don't want it close to my ground. So I just wanted to add that. That, that's the only way we, I got any information, anyone to show up in my house is by sending a letter back and told them it is false information. And I've been to a couple of the county committee meetings. A lot of them say they didn't know a thing about it. So by them approving, saying they're within guidelines, somebody didn't do their homework. Granted, they don't want to tell the farmer what to do with these ground, but they need to know what he's doing with his ground and what kind of may do to the community in the surrounding area. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, who am I supposed to give this back to? Let me get a, if you don't, if you can wait two minutes after the meeting and I'll go downstairs and make the copy and get it right back to you. Okay. Let's give it to the council.
Thank you, you guys, for coming and speaking and talking to us about it today.
I'll move to a turn.
Did I get a motion to adjourn?
They just did.
Pam did.
I thought I heard, okay, Pam. Didn't hear you, Pam.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a.
I'll second.
I'm ten seconds.
Tim's got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Origin.
Out of six forty-six. Um, down the bottom right of there, you'll hit uh black screen. Down here?
No.
You can do it over the side, but it's quicker just to go here. That shuts it down.